All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 14 Plumton Board of Selectmen meeting. Just a reminder that the meeting's being recorded for cablecast and for YouTube. Presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered a public record. We will dispense with the ground rules tonight and just do as we usually do and have a few moments of silence for reflection in any manner that we'd like to use it tonight. So again, welcome, everyone. We'd just come out of executive session and we had a visit from a citizen and let me, so we have about eight balls up in the air at once. So actually first, if I could ask you to sign that. We'll get that back to Dale and that can go out in the mail tonight. So are there any additions to the published agenda that people would like considered for the meeting tonight? Then we can move ahead. I will say that we did have a visit from a citizen who dropped off some petitions regarding the idea of having FinCom meetings filmed. We don't have this on the agenda tonight. As I understand it, the FinCom is meeting tonight and is discussing further this themselves. So I think with that being the case, that we haven't heard from FinCom, that this isn't on the agenda, that we can add it to the agenda for next week.
Okay.
With everyone?
Great idea.
All right. So that will be a continuing issue. So the agenda item about FinCom, very well. So that brings us up to a bunch of licenses. First of all, the common vitular license renewal for Village Cafe. Have we received that?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one do I need to sign? That one? Yeah, absolutely. Just the yellow copy, right?
Yes, please.
All right, so that one we voted last week. Okay, so we've got everything we need here. All right.
And by the way, we have a bunch of other licenses tonight and I did take a quick visit to each of these sites over the last week or so. Not necessarily to do a white glove inspection, but just to get a sense of every of them and that everything appeared to be shipshape and was pleased with what I found. But so, have you had a chance to take a look at this or you want to take a look?
Well, thank you for doing that because that was a concern with these renewals. I appreciate you taking the time because I wasn't sure if we were going to have to go out as a group to do that. So thank you very much.
Joe Freitas always used to say to me, "Now, you have to, once a week, do a tour around town, check everything out." I used to do it on my bicycle in warm weather. I've fallen a little behind in that.
Well, you could definitely get a better look on your bicycle because you're going slower.
Absolutely. So I make a motion that the common vitular license for Village Cafe be approved?
No, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So I'll sign that. And just so we make sure that we're getting all this stuff signed, why don't you sign? And that brings us up to a bunch of Class II and Class III license renewals?
Yes.
Isn't there a second signature required by somebody? It says clerk.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have them all. Two are being held with some approval from Mr. Carling, the buyer inspector, because of the business certificates.
Where am I?
One stated this.
Selectmen's office, contact person, yeah, so I think there. The official.
So I'll just put mine in there.
It's all right, that's fine.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. So some of them were waiting on Mr. Carling, so.
Yes, two.
Okay. So why don't we take a peek at the ones?
To do the business certificate approval. Because now everybody that has across two and three has a business certificate on file with the town now. Some of them do not.
Okay.
That never.
So are any of those ready for signing tonight?
All of, I have these.
Okay.
One, two, three, five.
How many are there altogether? All right, Angels, Kerry.
I believe it's eight or nine.
SoSure, Towing.
No, that's, you pick it up, that's under different.
Oh, Motorsports.
Yes.
That's Mike True. All right. Plumbton Cycles. Okay, so we don't have Competition and.
I sent him out a reminder on the, I'm trying to call.
And then what about Albies? We don't have Albies.
That is Mr. Carling.
Okay, so he's got.
And then I have Plumton Motors, I believe that it is, John Van Tuccio.
Oh, yeah, John Van Tuccio, yeah, he's got a small one, okay.
That's another one.
Okay.
Before I'm just looking at.
Pending.
Pending. And Plumton Sand and Gravel, spoke to her and she nailed it out one day.
Okay.
So I told her I'd give it a week and if not, she said she'd run down with it. But then when we knew it, I hadn't got anything.
So do we have the Class II paperwork from those people? Because the business certificate is not ours.
No, I didn't get anything from Competition or Plumton Sand and Gravel, but I spoke to.
Okay. So this is everything we have that's complete?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
The other two are complete. I just, the business is, and without the, they've not signing out on it. They're pending. So they're in my office if you want.
I didn't, I didn't know that he really, I mean, these are unrelated. This is a Class II.
How do they require me?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if that, it was on the checklist.
Oh, business certificate is on the checklist. Okay. All right, well, if it's on the checklist, then.
And I have a checklist.
Okay.
That's one in front of you.
Okay. All right.
You can see it. This one right here, under your arm.
Oh, this one, okay.
So you can see everybody got one of those.
Okay. So business certificate. All right, it's per the MGL. All right. Okay. All right, so it looks like we have to hold off on those then.
All right. So these are the ones that we have.
Everything's great.
One, two, three.
Another one there.
Four.
Four.
Okay. You guys had a chance to.
Oh, and you're waiting for something on.
They've been done. I'm just getting them back. They're going to send them to me. You have to sign those.
Okay, so this one is all ready to go, too?
Yes, those five that you have are ready to go.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, so I'll just.
Everything's good.
Okay, perfect.
Everyone had a chance to look these over. As far as you're concerned, these five have everything that we need.
Everything.
Okay. So let's go down the list. So I have Angels Auto and Towing, application for a Class II license.
How many vehicles does it say in there?
He took over the all cars.
This is newish, isn't it?
Yes. And he took over all cars.
All right, so 15 cars in front of the fence.
So on my tour, I did not count cars. I did take a look that things looked orderly, shipshape, and was comfortable with each
Well, we should probably verify. Plumbton's only got, you know, 15 cars. But he did do that last year. He verified the counts.
Number of cars on the list.
All right.
I could drive by to my woman.
Yeah, you could. You could.
Okay, but I don't think he's got that many.
You don't think he's got 15 out there?
No.
At Angels, okay.
Nope.
Well, I would feel better if we verified it.
Okay.
All right. So let's, why don't we hold off on Angels then?
All right, Angels.
15 cars.
Okay.
And so that's 15 in front of the fence. I don't know if he's allowed more than that. Let's see. All right, da-da-da. All right, there's where I'm sure it's, oh, here we go. Doesn't really say what he's applied for. Looks like he had 15 cars last time. No, it looks like he must just have 15 cars and they're allowed in front of the fence. There's nothing about any other vehicles. Okay. So you just want to verify 15 cars on Angels?
Well, I guess maybe we're going to have to verify on all of these.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
On Plumton Cycles. 10 motorcycles.
Yep, 10 on display at one time, so it looks like he's just got 10.
Okay.
Need a bigger paperclip. There you go. So you don't mind doing this, swinging by?
No, I'm fine.
Looks like that one's 15. Motorsports, that's true. Like true.
15 vehicles. You know, um.
I mean, you've done everything else. You already found out they're clean and orderly and.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it's just the count.
All right, we got that one. One car.
One car.
Okay.
Awesome.
And then there's one more, right?
Yep. That one's the Steve Craig.
No vehicles to be parked to obstruct the view of traffic. Well, that one, I think, let me look again and just make sure.
So no more than six unregistered vehicles.
Okay, that's six unregistered. All right, then the ones we don't have, I guess I'll need to know on those, too. The ones that aren't complete yet.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. And that way can we can do everything next week?
Competition is 25, if you just looked at that.
Okay.
All right, so how much?
25.
Okay. And then what do we got? One Grove Street.
Ran Tuccio.
Ran Tuccio. I don't know what it says. I don't know, it's five. I'd have to look at that.
All right, when we take a break, do you want to?
Sure.
Do you want to get those? Okay. Okay. And then what else? Is that it? Oh, and then you've got Plumton Sand and Gravel. So we need Plumton Sand and Gravel, Ran Tuccio, and Yoonoo. Competition off the top of your head.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And then we have Albies.
Oh, Albies, and you don't have.
That's a Class II and a Class III renewal.
Right.
What's that?
Albies.
Albies is a Class II and a Class III, so this, I'll have to pull this.
Yeah, you'll have to pull that one, it's very confusing.
All right, so if you'll let me know how many vehicles, I'll check on that.
Perfect. Thank you for checking those counts.
Okay. I guess we're back to town personnel policy and procedures. And I'm not sure we answered the Halifax Plumton Express reporter's question. Do we have a name for the collection of documents we're working on?
I would say it was Town Employee Handbook.
Yeah, it can be Policies and Procedures Manual. I mean, it can be whatever you want to call it. Doesn't matter. We should probably land on some name so that actually I can put it with the cover.
Guess maybe we'll have to keep working on it. Town Employee Policy and Procedures Manual or Handbook?
Ooh, that's good. That covers both.
Okay, town.
Yeah, or you can, yeah, you could make it, you could make it even more, whatever you want to call it. I mean, towns call it different things. Some towns call it Employee Handbook, some towns call it Policy Procedure Manual, some towns call it a variation of both, two of those.
Yeah, I think Mark nailed it.
What's the word down there? If you want to put that on the, come on now, you've got to remember.
I think you're going to have to replay the tape if you want.
Employee Policy and Procedures Manual.
Town Employee Policy and Procedures Manual. Handbook. Handbook, I like handbook.
Handbook, okay. Nice.
Got it? Got it. Okay. So first on the list was the disciplinary guidelines document. And I think I was left with the task last week. We made it through the first document supplied by Copeland and Page. And then there was a second page that if we wanted to add, listed the kind of disciplinary action that would be imposed. And I think we were a touch concerned whether it was redundant. In looking it over, I saw no redundancy, so I think it could be simply added, was my.
This was a little, was kind of redundant.
Yeah, that is.
Agreed.
This page two.
Yeah, so I'm talking about that we could add, if we want, this list, this list.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's a good list.
Which isn't inclusive. It says that these are specific grounds for disciplinary action, but not limited to the following. So it certainly just gives a sense of what's involved. All right.
Yeah, the only other questions I had is the violating privacy or, in some cases, executive session information.
Well, the violating the privacy or executive session, I think that's going to be in a town policy. Won't it be included?
Yes.
And the social media will be too, because I think we're going to be voting that. So both of those should be covered.
Then we're good.
Under town policies.
Okay.
And I, my suggestion was to get rid of unsafety, sexual harassment, and others. To just say violating town policies.
I'm okay with that.
Rather than, you know, specifying, saying those three. I mean, okay. Where do you think we would, the best spot to add this would be?
Right after the end of the Copeland and Page thing?
I had it after the first paragraph, but whatever you guys think, doesn't really It might flow better after.
Second paragraph.
Yeah, after the second paragraph? Yeah, all right. Do you want to put it in there?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
So it spells it out before we say what the warnings are?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
So you got that, Dale?
Are you making corrections on one of those sheets that you give me so I can?
Yeah, I can give mine. Because we had talked about using town coordinator instead of human resources director. We had scratched off page 21 on the first page. And then second page, once again, human resources director.
Right.
Was Dale. And then we were substituted wherever it said town manager.
Right.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay.
All right. And then insertion of that after the second paragraph.
Insert this, the second paragraph.
So that could then be sent out afterward for review.
Thank you, Dale.
Put it on the list, thank you.
Disciplinary guidelines. Okay. Progress.
I actually have the list on my computer now.
All right. Second one, discuss and possibly vote on employment application. Dale was kind enough to send us several. I felt like I was having that problem that buyers have when there are too many options and.
I know, this one was scary.
Oh, yeah. I, I had two concerns that in general I would make it as simple as possible and I, we need certain amount of information, but boy, I don't want any information. I want the least amount of information that's, there is no, we limit the chance of abuse of privacy being affected.
So Gil and Northbridge were the same.
Were the same.
They were my favorite.
Oh, you know, I never even saw those, the Gil and Northbridge.
And they were my favorites, too.
Okay.
Very simple. The one thing I had was, it's Gil and did I lose Northbridge?
Here's Northbridge.
Oh, on phone number, it just had one phone number and so many of us these days have four phone numbers. So I think maybe two or three phone numbers. Really straightforward, just straight out.
I don't, do we need social security numbers?
Applications.
On the application?
Yeah, that'd be a good thing to.
Well, again, it depends on whether the.
Well, yes.
If the job requires, it's required for Corey.
It's right, it's required for Corey, but not every position is going to have the Corey. And we may want to include the Corey, you know, with the application, but say, do not complete unless you've been instructed to do so based on, you know, the position that you're applying for.
Then I would leave that, I would definitely leave that out.
Because, yeah, I looked at Kingston and they didn't have a social security on there.
My only other one on this one was on the third page, there was a sentence, further, "I agree to take a physical exam given by the appointed town physician, which may include testing for drugs and psychological evaluation."
Oh, jeez, I'd probably be out then. The psychological evaluation, not the drugs, the psychological evaluation.
So I, I do not, I mean, I would leave that out. We don't need that stuff.
No. 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 Yeah, just get rid of that whole.
Yep.
Paragraph, okay.
Or the first part, I understand the appointment is probationary. That was all right. It's the physical exam.
Right, because we're not going to send anybody for a physical exam.
No, we are not.
Okay.
I mean, police do, I think fire does, but that's.
But they have their own.
You'll probably address drug testing as a policy later on.
Later on, exactly.
Later on in the book, because certain jobs, you're going to want to have that option to be able to do it.
Absolutely.
So do you want a chance to review this?
Can I just quickly look at it?
Or yeah, or, I mean, we can wait, hold on to it until next week, if you'd like.
No, 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 I think we can definitely.
It's definitely the most simple form.
Yeah. You know, while you're looking, can we have like a three-minute recess? I just want to go down to FinCom and let them know we did receive this petition. So we're going to take a three-minute recess, all right?
Would that be pertinent?
We're back.
Just so that we could see if they'd been fired?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you ever, how about if, have you ever been employed?
So this would be another document that, Dale, will you be able to clean it up or add what we're adding and spread it around or?
I'm hoping. I may have to change the format. If it's done in PDF, I'm not sure I have the software to crack a PDF. In fact, I know I don't because, but I should have it, I should get it. In any event, yeah, I'll be able to put it together in a, you know, in a format.
Okay. So are we ready? So I make a motion that we adopt the employment application that we've been discussing as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we need to do the same thing for the disciplinary.
Yeah, we didn't vote the disciplinary.
Okay. So we will vote on that?
Yes.
All right, so I make a motion, we accept the new disciplinary guidelines as amended.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The third one, boy, was a challenge for me, the social media policy. And I was impressed at looking at the two or three different ones that Dale was kind enough to give to us to see the range of how people went at it. I think there was an eight-page document, there was a one-and-a-half pager. I can fully see how much trouble we could get into with this and my, on some levels, it felt to me like you need an eight-pager. On the other hand, it felt to me, as soon as you have an eight-pager, no one knows it, remembers it, or reads it. And I look forward to hearing what everyone else thought. I wondered if this might be one that we just might simply ask Copeland and Page if they had a boilerplate that they recommend.
We have it.
Oh, God, was it the eight-pager?
That's the eight-pager.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Disappointed.
Never ask, never ask a lawyer.
Yeah, but you know, it was very thorough and, I mean, it was thorough.
They've got it all covered.
They've got it all covered.
I felt like I wanted some direction on what the board thought. And if we're feeling that it's that one, then I'd like to read it over and maybe attack it again next week.
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I went with the, again, the more simple ones.
Which one did you go with?
Oh, just Wareham and Bellinham, just, you know, because they're short and sweet.
Yeah, they are. They were short and sweet, no doubt about it.
And both of them, I thought, probably needed some modification, but.
You know what I liked out of Wareham was about the seal, the town seal. And if, and that wasn't in the Copeland and Page one?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that's something. It says misuse of the town seal is a criminal act punishable by the general laws. Any use where an employer agent of the town speaks representing the town must be approved through the official chain of command with prior permission granted. So it's just, you know, it's important that you can't use the town seal and, you know, you can talk as a public citizen, but that we needed to have some things.
See, these were talking mostly about town-owned social medias.
Mm-hmm.
We only have our website.
Yeah, we don't have much. I mean, we may in the future, but we don't now. I mean, so again, we've, you've done that with a couple of these where you've put in stuff that really doesn't apply to Plumton yet, but it's there when it's, when it's there and when you need it. But I think that some written policy about what employees or people who work for the town or appointed committee members, you know, what they can, what they can say and what they can do, you know, because.
Yeah, I mean, this talked about handling negative comments, if you made a mistake, that you don't remove it, you know, you could change if there was a spelling mistake, but if you had made a mistake, you needed to leave it there and then say, you know, listen, we made a mistake, this is actually, you know, the accurate information. So, I mean, the Copeland and Page really had all the bases covered, as much as you I know.
So let's, let's look at that again and then also add in the town seal bit that.
Okay. Yeah, so want to hold this until next week?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So we will use sort of as our starting point, the Copeland and Page.
Yeah.
We'll see if there's anything that's totally irrelevant to us. We will add the town seal. Got to protect the town seal.
Got to protect the town seal.
All right, we'll have it.
Deborah Sampson.
She's not on the town seal.
Oh, okay, sorry. It just says seal.
She isn't.
Yeah, it just says seal.
Darn.
We should have a contest for a new town seal.[1757.12] We should have a contest for a new town seal.
Bylaw about the seal where, where town meeting can actually approve a different town, uh, and change the town seal if they, I mean, you know, if there's something out there. So, it's a possibility to do that. I mean, and, and, cause I've had a couple of people that from other towns comment and they say, that's your seal? And I said, yeah, that's the seal. Maybe adding Deborah Sampson to the town, town seal and having one, you know, having one done up and having people vote on it or asking Republicans to.
I don't know, if it ain't broke. How about if we hold that one off for another time?
We maybe, we should save some of our energy for the tax rate, I think. Okay, so we'll come back to that next week. We actually are making nice project on this document. All right, follow-up, Corey policy. Dale, you were gonna check with town council and?
Yeah, I haven't, uh, she did forward it. I sent an email and, an email to Alana. She did forward it and I don't have the language back yet. But when, when it gets back with the language that they intended, it must've been a typo and whatever they sent us.
Okay.
Um, I'll just correct it with the, with the language. Again, it's, it's one of, that's one of those things that, that doesn't even apply to Plimpton at this point.
Okay.
Could in the future.
Okay.
So you'll keep.
And that's been accepted, there's been no comment.
All right. So you'll keep that on your radar screen, we're gonna consider that adopted. Very good, excellent. We were gonna consider other policy and procedures to add. I will say that the dog ate my homework or more truthfully, I just didn't have the time to think about it yet. So I'd like another week on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Beautiful. Uh, other follow-ups. Boy, don't we have, we need some fun on the agenda. Maybe next week it'll be a little better that way.
Maybe we should go for the town seal.
Yeah, maybe we should. All right, so, um, we're, we're up to town email addresses, uses and functioning. And so first of all, Dale, thank you so much for getting Mike in.
I mean, I, I think we're.
Hundred percent better, for me.
All right. And for me, mostly better and was he able?
My laptop is here. I haven't even had a chance to fire it up, so I'm sure.
Did he take a look? Do you know if he took a look?
He did look at it.
Yeah, he, he did work on hers as well.
He was like boom, 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 and it was done.
I, my only holdup is, is just the old dog, new tricks things and I'll try to get going on that. It may take me a little bit. This is about using our town email rather than our personal email, which is a little inconvenient, but there are many advantages of that.
Many advantages.
So we'll give it a try. All right, solar updates, anything, anywhere?
We have, yeah, I have a letter and a proposed pilot agreement from, um, another operation. There's two solar sites that I guess are warming our way through the, the planning board at this point. And, I mean, I will forward you the, I will forward you the documentation, but town meeting last year only authorized one, one pilot agreement, and that was the pilot agreement with, on Lake Street. So at this particular point in time, we have no real, I mean, we can negotiate it, but we don't have any, it requires town meeting. So there's no real authority to say yea or nay to anything. I guess my question to the board was, I'll forward it to you, but do you want me to forward this to council as well at this point and get the ball rolling on that prior, five months prior to town meeting? I mean, or do I, do you want me to inform the people that, well, it has to wait until town, a town meeting vote before we can, or closer to the town meeting before we.
I, I would say that in case they don't wanna wait that long and we don't wanna spend the legal money if we don't need to.
Exactly, and then.
So I, basically, that's what I was gonna, I just wanted to touch base. I mean, cause he's, he's hit me with another letter and, and, I mean, another email, which is fine, except, except, um, without a special town meeting, there's no way that you, I mean, there's no way that you and a board, as a board can, vote to accept a pilot agreement one way or the other. So, um, that's where we stand on that. So I'll, I'll let him know that and I'll keep you posted as to what happens.
Where is this?
Center Street, not Center Street. There are two.
Same company?
Same company, same representative for both of them, two different ones.
Which is Blue Waver.
No, it's not. This is another company altogether. There are two more. You'd have to check with the planning board because I haven't really asked them. But I'm assuming that the, the company has put in the applications and the special permit process is in the works at this point.
All right.
I had a conversation with Erv Butler and one that's proposed down on, what is it, Winnetox?
It might be Winnetox.
That's Borrego, right?
Uh, uh, unless Erv has told them, unless you can come up with that, an access agreement, don't bother coming back.
Okay.
And as of this weekend, he's heard nothing. So, for what it's worth.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful.
They're supposed to have a hearing tonight.
Are they having a hearing tonight on?
No, uh, they found out that he hadn't gotten the access agreement like he just described, so they canceled it.
Okay.
They canceled the hearing, they're still having a meeting.
Yeah, I believe that was the smaller of two. They had, there was two proposals and I think that was the smaller of the two proposals. But, um, that's a good piece of information. I'll check with Erv on that and I'll get back to the, the petitioner and, and just tell him that, first of all, we, we have no authorization to sign a pilot agreement at this point. And, um, I personally, from my standpoint, I think that Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors as far as a pilot agreement should wait until it's, until the planning board is through with the special permit process for it before, um, you know, before you take any action on it at all.
Now, once, say they do approve it, is there a timeline that we have to have an agreement in place by? Anything that would cause us to have to do something faster?
No.
Okay.
No, no, it just, it would require, um, it would require a fully vetted and signed, a pilot agreement, but that has to go, the town meeting has to authorize you to sign that agreement whenever there's any kind of a payment in lieu of taxes. I mean, in final analysis, it's just the amount of taxes that would be paid over a twenty-year period divided by twenty rather than the, depreciation of the personal property and all of that kinda stuff. But, um, again, we could put it on the, um, put it on the agenda. I mean, put it on the town meeting warrant article in there.
Well, yeah, providing they get the permits, the special permits from the planning board. Okay. All right, so, um, I'm sure they'll.
Yeah, I'll check with Erv Butler on that, just to see where they stand. I don't know. I will inform him that there's, it's not gonna happen, A, until he's, you know, fully permitted through the planning board and B, until the town meeting takes a vote and that next vote will be, uh, annual or special in May. We won't be having an unanticipated special town meeting.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna hold a special town meeting for this.
Absolutely not, for a whole bunch of reasons.
Yeah.
In general, this has been a town that avoids special town meetings.
Right, they're too expensive.
In part 'cause of the expense, but in truth, in part because it's an opportunity kinda for mischief sometimes.
Well, you're right, you can, you can stack a special.
It's actually a very good policy and it, it becomes diff- difficult at times, but, I mean, frankly, what happens in towns that have a lot of special town meetings is everybody gets a chance to raid the treasury in the process.
Right.
Yeah.
Everything disappears. You do it all in one fell swoop at the end of the year and, and, and it seems to work out very, pretty good.
So, I, the only thing in communicating with, with these companies, I think probably the board is generally in favor of pilot agreements in terms of revenue for the town, as long as everything else is in order and all the permits, boards and committees are taken care of. So, I, I think the, um, I, I think it would be the sense of this board, or if they were asking you for a sense of this board, is that, um, we would be in favor of a pilot agreement, assuming everything else was in order. So that they, you know, they wouldn't be freaked out that we're gonna get in trouble.
Yeah, tell them we want their tax dollars. That's not a problem.
Is that fair to say? Assuming everything else is in order and, I mean, we've not seen these projects in any way.
Everything is contingent on the proper permits being, yeah.
Okay.
But yeah.
Okay?
Perfect.
All right, so, um, let's see, uh, um, so we're down to board goals and priorities. Shall I turn to my right first?
Well, I don't know if we really have a whole lot. Um, Colleen, what's going on with Public Safety Building Committee?
We have another meeting this week, Wednesday, at six o'clock in this room. And, um, we are working on, hopefully going forward with just the police station. Citing it on this campus.
Okay.
And I have the plans.
And we have.
Which I will forward to the committee tonight, tomorrow actually probably. And, um, and sort of the plans and that's just, what the committee voted on last week, which was to downsize that and, and, and.
So we have that planned and you'll get that out tomorrow, so committee could look at?
Everybody can, everybody can look. It's basically two.
Could you CC the rest of the board as, as well?
Selectmen and the, and the, and the committee, since two of the board are there most of the time, so.
We are. Okay.
You might as well CC the advisors as well.
Pardon me?
You might as well CC the advisors as well.
Right.
Jim O'Keefe.
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it out to everybody. I just, I just got it, the staff and then he, he had a, um, he asked me, he, I was in the meeting, so I couldn't answer the phone, but he did call and he said, if you got any questions, let me know. Essentially, what it does is it takes the scope of the project and pushes it down to just the police station and, um, and shows a lot of the site works and elevations that are gonna be there. I could almost probably get a price off of this one. I mean, at least the ballpark numbers for the, for the site work.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Dale, how you coming on the fixed cost spreadsheet?
Right here.
Hallelujah.
Well, this is just, I mean, again, and this is.
Give me what you got.
This is just a breakdown. The, um, the, um, the first sheet is the actuals and the second is the projections.
Awesome.
And again, that's only the expenditures, not the revenue.
Okay.
I haven't done that.
That is perfect.
But.
Thank you very much.
And again, if you wanna, um, i- if you wanna inquire, like I said, the methodology, methodology in, in, in doing the projections was just, I mean, either a certain percentage was figured out over the five years for, um, you know, tax levy, new growth, again, was averages of prior years were taken to do that, two and a half percent, obviously, on the, on the tax levy. And, um, again, local receipts, it's a toughie, but I just averaged out the prior years and put it in there.
Okay.
Really tough to, you know, it's really tough to anticipate. We don't have real fluctuating local receipts unless somebody builds, and builds a Cisco and then you've got a lot of permit fees coming in.
Okay. All right, um, what about like the, the police contract?
Um, again, I just put the police and expenses in under a certain percentage increase every year and I.
That's perfect.
And I use, because.
Where are they?
Uh, well, it would be in the, um, in the, where am I got it here? This is. This is the projec- I'm sorry, this is the projected revenue scale. I don't have the fixed cost down here.
Okay.
They didn't give you the fixed cost.
Okay.
I have the fixed cost, but I don't have it, I don't have it here. This is.
Okay.
Projected, projected revenue.
Yeah, so you've got the police on that, you've got, um, like equipment that we borrowed for, all that kinda stuff? Cool, okay.
Yeah, I will have, I will have that, yeah.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you so much, this is a huge project.
So I, I, yeah, I'd like to revisit this, I think, next week. So these numbers were generated, or who put this, you put this together?
Well, it's based on, um, it's based on a projected revenue that, that's actual, you know, that, that, and that's the finance committees, from the finance committees reports year over year. And then, um, the, um.
Has the finance committee seen this document?
No, it's not complete yet, so I, I didn't, I didn't, I, I haven't given it to them. And I mean, they may, I mean, they may in fact wanna change some of it. Again, some of this is just an average opinion of what you can expect over time, um, in, in terms of, again, this is in terms of revenue. I will have the expenditures. But when you put the expenditures together, again, it was like, uh, what, what's the increase? I mean, do you wanna recommend an increase that I should use? Like a salary increase year over year? And attempting to be somewhat.
What do we generally do? Is it, is it generally two percent?
Well, it can be, it's been three in the past, it's been two, it's been, I mean, I can do it at a two and a half percent figure, I haven't. Or I can do it at a three percent figure. My, my thought was that to be on the conservative side, do it at three and if it's less, you're better off. But I mean, um, at least it's not.
Uh, I ju- I just wanna be careful here that we're not stepping on FinCom toes. Normally, they, send out with the budget request, some sort of recommendation or guideline. And I think that probably is more in their territory, or at least we should meet together.
Do you want to know?
Personnel actually is the one that determines as far as.
Yeah, wage and personnel.
I think last year we aimed at two percent, um, sort of, um, minimal cost of living. And I have a feeling this is gonna be a really tight year, but I think we wanna just be a little cautious here that we, we, um, obviously, we have input, but we wanna work collaboratively with FinCom on this.
Well, when I put that whole, that whole list together and give it to you, I mean, you can, it'll, it'll have the methodology behind it, or at least the percentages that are worked in. You can change it if you like.
Yeah, we can change it, that would be easy enough. But some of them are fixed. The police is fixed, they have a contract.
Police will be fixed. I mean, they, they'll be, in the next five years, there'll be a new police contract. So, how much?
Right, right.
And, um, and, I mean, when you get into, there'll be a new teacher's contract, be new school con- several, they have contracts. They have, I don't know how many collective bargaining units they have down there, three or four anyway, but, um, so that will come into play. And I mean, then there's wild cards, like special education. You have no idea what that's gonna be from year over year, so you can only guess at it. And, um, and, you know, again, it's just.
I mean, I would be happy with just the ones we know, just the police, um, and, um, the teachers' contracts to start. Cause then we'll know when things expire and, um, and we know what our fixed costs are. This is, the compact is gonna help with this. They're gonna want a lot of this information when they help us with our, um, our five-year plan. So, um, you know, we're just kind of gathering information, but we certainly wanna work with FinCom to make sure that, uh, the information we're giving them is, uh, is accurate.
I, I absolutely, positively, cause we've actually had issues in the past with, working with numbers that turned out not to be the case. And I, I appreciate Dale's work, but absolutely want FinCom's input on this to feel like we're dealing with, with real numbers. Can you share this, share this with FinCom or share it with me and I'll share it with FinCom?
Yeah, no, I mean, I can put, I can, I can share it with the FinCom, just, just give them some ideas.
We had talked at one point about monthly, um, department meetings, or at least, I think we're getting toward that time of year. Well, we're already in December. I think in early January, the Board of Selectmen and FinCom should definitely meet together and sort of plow out our plan for the next four and a half months, because in that period of time, we're gonna end up with a budget.
Absolutely. But the first page is, minus the last column, is all actuals. So this is, these are actual figures that we have spent from two thousand and eight till two thousand and fifteen. So it is interesting to see the trend.
Yeah, and I, I haven't done it.
Or the receipts, yeah.
To graph some of that as well, um, just to see it, because again, the visual is a much easier look than the numbers.
Than the numbers, right. So, yeah, very interesting. Okay.
Lucy, when can we expect the compact grants to start happening?
The, if you guys liked what you saw in the proposal, and Susan Ossoff saw it and she liked what she saw, she was very excited about what, they're gonna help us with, then I will let her know that their proposal looks good to us, keep, you know, let's keep moving with this. Get us a final proposal so that we can get this thing moving. So, did you get a chance to read what I sent you about the community compact?
In the last week?
Yeah, I think I sent it to you last week. I mean, all it does is it spells out the, um, what they're gonna do, the development of the financial management policies, the five-year financial forecast, what they expect us to do, what they're gonna do. And then the third thing was the capital improvement plan. I just spoke with Susan and she would like us to focus on the five-year financial forecast, first off, to, um, to help us get ready for town meeting. She felt that was the highest priority of these three.
I haven't had a chance to look at that. I am anxious to look at that.
All right.
Could you resend that to me in case it's buried somewhere?
I actually also don't remember receiving it. I probably did, but.
I'll send it to you guys again. So take a look at it.
It was just me.
If it looks good, let me know and I will tell, um, the woman that, uh, that wrote this up for us that, um, or do you wanna wait until next week? We can wait until Monday. Let's wait until Monday.
Yeah.
So I'll email it to you anyway and then we'll put it on the agenda for Monday to, um, if you guys like the proposal.
So we'll call this the compact proposal?
Yeah, compact proposal.
Okay, okay.
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 All right, uh, progressive discipline, check. Um, job description, so we're still working on, um, that. Dale gave us a list of ones that they needed to be broken out from the contract and I think after we get these, you know, get maybe some of these, um, policies done, we could start working on, on that. Yeah. Town email, so far so good. We're in good shape.
So far so good.
Corey policy done. Um, fifty-eight, fifty-nine Parsonage Road, um, that went to, um, auction last Friday.
It did.
It looks like it may have sold.
It sold.
Yeah.
Local resident, um, gonna farm the land.
Seriously?
Do you have a name?
That is so exciting.
You know, I, um-
I don't know if you should say anything.
Yeah.
Because it's still pending.
I mean, it's a public auction, but, you know, most of this-
I think USDA would probably have at least a-
Yeah, they'd, they'd provide you with the information.
Oh, that is fantastic news.
What was the price?
Yeah, it is.
A hundred and seventy, I think, or was it a hundred and eighty? Because there was ten thousand dollar deposit.
I think USDA knows.
Okay. I saw it on Zillow.
Well, that's where we'd be there, yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
I'm, I'm just not sure what's public and what's real and what isn't, but I, you know-
Well, that's fantastic.
Definitely a local resident, definitely interested in, um, uh, conserving the land and-
Oh, that's so exciting.
And we're thrilled.
I can't wait to find out who it is.
Yeah.
All right, uh, community compact, we talked about that, we're going to hold that until next week, you guys are going to read the proposal, um, Blue Wave, um, did you have the final, a contract for us to sign, did you say, on Blue Wave? Did you say that earlier?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean-
So it's still, they're still working out with, uh, the lawyers?
You mean the, the-
Blue Wave and Matipoisit, the Matipoisit one?
You're signed on the Matipoisit one, we're, 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 we're signed on the Matipoisit one, as far as being a sponsor in Matipoisit and, and, and getting paid for that, that's-
No, no, no. Isn't the-
Yes, we're, we're signed for that and we're waiting for the check, but, but we also agreed to something.
We're in a, all right, Blue Wave PPA, Matipoisit-
Power purchase.
Power purchase, yes.
The power purchase.
Oh, okay, so that's what we're negotiating, okay.
Uh, yeah, that's bouncing around with lawyers now.
Okay.
That's right there, PPA.
Okay, town owned land, we're still working on that, um, all right, Dale's working on the, um, the cost spreadsheet now, so we'll have that done. Um, what about the monthly communications meetings? Do you really, do you think monthly is too much? Is it, would it be, it's-
You mean for department heads type meetings?
Yeah, for department heads.
No, monthly's, you know, I mean, certainly, I don't think mon- I, I don't think it's too much, I mean, we may want to start off with every other month and then go from there, or we may just want to do it every month, because you're going into the budget season, that was the-
Okay.
The idea to, you know, to figure it, I mean, because there's things happening, I mean, the first six months of the year is when things really are planned.
All right, well, maybe once we meet with FinCom, um, Dale will have a better idea what the timeline is, and he can start scheduling the meetings for the department heads, just to communicate.
And, and it probably should be a, I don't know if there's a member of the Board of Selectmen wants to attend these meetings, we haven't, because there would be during the day with that, so, um, again, we need some, let me know what, what times are good. You know what times everybody is here, because they work, but, you know, whatever times are best for you, and then, uh, we'll, we'll plan one.
I am glad to try to attend, um, uh, and not to, you're-
Either way.
More than welcome as well, or maybe we can split it up, uh, I think that communication during budget season and all of us getting to the degree possible on the same page and having the same story would be nice.
Okay, so you want to shoot for starting those in January?
Perfect.
Okay. All right, anything with, um, the Green Communities Grant, Dale?
Oh, yes. And the state in their infinite wisdom won't give you the money unless you pay the bill first. Now, they gave us the first quarter of the grant money, and then they gave us the second fifty percent of the grant money, but we're now sitting on the final twenty-five percent that we need of the grant money. And, um, I, it's not in the process when you apply for it, it's not in any of that stuff, it's buried in the applic- in the contract that you actually signed for this thing, that you're supposed to pay these in advance. Well, I mean, my thing is, you know, first of all, I mean, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, people don't generally appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay off all of this stuff before they receive the grant money, in any event. Um, so we are still owed twenty-eight thousand dollars on, on the grant, and we still owe that money to, um, to the contractor who did the work. And I informed him, and I haven't heard back yet, and the state, that it, okay, that's fine, it will have to wait until we do our annual town meeting, and we can appropriate the money from, it's all capital, we can appropriate from the capital account in the article, it will say that when the grant money comes in, it reimburses the capital account, it's a, it's an accounting function, but that's the way we're going to have to do it, and so that TNT Energy will have to wait until, uh, until after the town meeting to be made whole on this. Fortunately, they, they did get a lot of incentives from, uh, EverSource, um, at the time, and, and they have, uh, three quarters of the, three quarters of their money, so, I mean, it's not going to be a killer, it's not like we can't give them anything, but I think the, um, my personal opinion is that the state should be a bit more upfront about that when they're doing it, because of course, it's, you know, it's an accounting function, and you have to, you have to plan for it. You know, I mean, like I said, we don't, we didn't appropriate a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to pay bills in advance on this, which is actually, I think, not the real way they should do it. But anyway, that's the status, you will see an article on the town meeting warrant to, um, to, uh, to pay that bill so that we can receive the final, um, the final payment from the state on the grant.
Should we start a, um, list of, um, like, the parking lot with, um, warrant articles that we need to submit so that we don't lose anything?
I have a list of that.
Do you?
And then what, what I usually do, um, at some point, um, is solicit that, you know, hit the master list and say, look, anybody who needs a warrant article, and generally, the departments come in with them. I usually do that a little bit, we usually do that a little bit later on, you can do it in time, it doesn't matter, I mean, the warrant's technically not open yet.
Something slips through the crack that we forget about.
That, that has been Dale's domain.
Okay.
You will feel it's your domain to kind of keep track.
Yeah, but again, I mean, uh, you know, at, I mean, certainly import from the board, I mean, do you want me to solicit any potential articles for town meeting warrant? I know, like, the, uh, Chief Dylan had brought in, uh, this is a small article, he's, he's looking for, uh, communications money for next year, and he should say, and he gave it to me and just sent it to me. And what I do is I just create a list of placeholders and go from there, obviously, none of it goes on until Selectmen approve, you know, approve the articles on a town meeting warrant, and there's a, and there's a boilerplate, um, warrant out there that carries all of the articles that we-
Right.
-we have every, um, every year, they're just repeaters, so, I believe, they all go in, and then at some point, we'll solicit, um, from anybody who has, um, and, and again, I mean, I'm trying to think of when we did it last year, I have to go back and look in the emails as to when I actually sent that out, but it was shortly after the first of the year, it wasn't too long, because-
Yeah, I would think it would be.
Well, yeah, the warrant has to be signed, sealed, and delivered by, uh, the-
Like March thirty-first, isn't it?
Or something, and, yeah, it's in late, later March, so, um, so you want to give people as much-
So I think soliciting right after the first of the year, just mentioning departments' boards that were beginning to look, uh, because we're going to start hitting winter vacations and-
Right.
-snow days and winter holidays, and if there's stuff we need to think about, I think the earlier the better.
Okay.
Sure.
Now, would this have to be in a special within the town, the annual town meeting? Because of, um, this fiscal year?
Green, oh, but it becomes bill of a prior year, which is nine tenths, which has a nine-tenths threshold in a town meeting, I don't anticipate it will be a problem, I mean, if it's-
Well, this would be from a prior year, not this year?
The Green Communities?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's prior year, that work was done last year.
Oh, was it? Okay, all right.
Yeah, so-
Okay.
It would technically be a bill of a prior year.
Gotcha.
But it would just be an article to pay it probably out of the capital account, which is a two-thirds vote, but it's, requires a nine-tenths vote anyway. Um, and, um, and the article would stipulate the source of the money, the purpose of the money, and where the reimbursement from the money will go back, make that account whole again, so it'll just be in the account.
All right, well, that's great, that's, um, awesome that, uh, that you do so much of that, because it's a lot of work.
The state could make it a lot easier.
The warrant, yeah, they could, but they won't.
No, exactly.
All right, so, job descriptions for all town employees, you really, um, you have the list together, it's just, it's a project we need to tackle, maybe after we get the personnel policies.
Yeah, and I think we need to create some, I mean, we need to, um, you know, the fire chiefs is combined, um, police sergeant is combined, those are a little different than our, um, and, um, veterans agent is combined.
Okay.
We probably should have a separate contract and a, and a, and a job description-
And a job description.
-to go with, with those, and then there may be some other, um, there may be some other, uh, you don't have a job description, there may be one for chief of police, I don't have it. Uh, building department clerk, they were just in the process of that, we have a job description for that, um, building commissioner, we have a job description, um, animal control, we just have a contract, may want to make that into a job description, again, it's, it's, um, zoning enforcement officer, same thing, there are, there, and, and a lot of these are in the can, I mean, other people do them, other towns do them, and some of them have them, so, um-
But do we hold that?
On the ones that we have combined, we should probably separate the contract, not this currently, but I mean, separate the contract from the, so the next time the contract renewal comes up, it, it's, it's addressing a standalone job description for them.
Okay, that sounds perfect. Okay, anything going on with Spring Street, Carver Industrial Park?
Uh, no, we had a discussion on that today, actually, um, with the, uh, and, and again, I, I, maybe I told Colleen, maybe I didn't, um, the Kingston had, I mean, Carver had a full-time planner, and a full-time planner left, they have not fulfilled the position, so it's currently not on their radar screen.
Okay, so it's low priority for them?
It's low priority for them, and, and it comes occasionally, it jumps up, and occasionally it falls off, it's really hard to say. But I will get the contact information, and we can, we could contact the state, because it's mostly state-owned property, uh, we could contact the state directly, but the, the problem being that we don't, Plimpton doesn't have any access to it other than through Carver, so it would almost have to return.
Okay. All right, and it looks like, um, the other two are done, the, um, amended engineering study of Palmer Street site, that's, is that what you guys are getting tomorrow? And then, um, the, uh, complete evaluation of Center Street property, that was done.
You can cross that off?
Yeah, we can cross that one off.
Yeah.
And then, um, we did the job application for new hires, we got-
Right.
That one done today, too, so, yeah.
Very good.
Great shape.
Okay.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Uh, so, as usual, we're up to town coordinator report, I think we've hit most of those already.
Most of it, the only thing, um, you know, as a result of your meeting, the joint meeting, three-town meeting with FinCom, uh, FinComs and the Board of Selectmen, um, it was brought up that we, you know, would look for, um, some multi-town opportunities, and, and that was the mix of Halifax, Kingston, Plymouth, and Carver getting involved in, because of the three-town sharing of the, uh, the studio, um, there was a projection of, well, what else can be done? So, we met, the administrators in the four towns, including Kingston, met, um, a month ago, and we just met today, and we spent about, we spent several hours together. Carver is in the process, they're a member of the Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District, of, of which we're not, um, we belong with Old Colony, which is a similar organization. So we had representatives from both of those, uh, organizations there today. Carver's in the process of having a study done, um, by, uh, the, um, SERPET is the way they call it, Southeast Regional Planning, and, uh, they agreed that they would incorporate some potential opportunities in the towns, and, uh, so they, they worked up, I will, they're going to redo this, and when I get the, say, uh, when I get the, uh, the, the updated stuff back, I'll, I'll, I'll send it along to you. We just addressed different opportunities, you know, what, what are po- what are possibilities in the future, what's real, what's not real, as far as any kind of opportunities at towns, shared, shared services, shared whatever, um, and it was pretty good. And we did plan on getting this together, and then at the next meeting, that, of the three towns have up there, which is February fourth, I believe, and they're going to, Carver will actually attend, and these people will attend, and give a quick, brief ref- so then we'll have Selectmen representation, and Carver's FinCom will come to the, they'll do it at the early part of the meeting, and then when that's done, um, you know, Carver can leave, because the rest of it will be dealing with the regional school and regional budget, but, um-
What time is that?
Seven PM, Thursday, February fourth.
Okay.
That's great.
That's on a Thursday.
Yep.
And that's it, Carver Town Hall?
Uh, yeah.
Yep, upstairs.
Town Hall.
So that's great, one of the best things that came out of that first meeting is the understanding that we can wring every last bit of, um, uh, cost out of running town government, but at some point, we can't wring any more out of it, and we can do our best to keep the tax rate moderate, but ultimately, we're only going to fix this mess with, with regionalization.
Well, it's, it's fairly, when you get the comparisons of the four towns, it's, it's a fairly interesting comparison.
Seven.
Seven.
As far as what, you know, what percentage of the revenue from, is determined from each town, you know, I mean, for instance, Kingston has a huge local receipts revenue, far, far more than any of the other, any of the other towns, most of the rest of us are residential. But again, it was just discussed a look at opportunities, and this, once they, when they put the study together, they will address some op- potential opportunities for, um, you know, for shared services and, and shared services in general, and, I mean, some long-range projections of things that might be possible, and some short, short-term stuff as well.
Beautiful.
That's excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent news. Can I, um, segue onto the, um, community compact for regionalization off of that?
Please.
You're only allowed one, and we have our one, so does Carver, Kingston, and Halifax, so I-
One what?
One compact, you're only allowed to apply for one compact. So we applied with the financial one, so, um, I sent an email to Tom Coulter to see if they could give us some help with that, because all the towns that are looking at regionalization, we've all already applied for a community compact and been approved, so I pointed out the cost savings and that we're working together, and, uh, so they're looking to see if they can give us a hand with that, but, um, we, right now, we can't apply for a compact for regionalization. We're not eligible.
Yeah, this was all done as an independent, there may be, I mean, again, there may be some grant money involved at some point down the road, it's possible, but I mean, it-
They're going to help, try to help, too.
You have to look, and, and, and to address some opportunities, and I mean, that was, it's, it's always good when you get together with three other towns, because, you know, you, you, um, you know, several different things were brought up, um, and I don't even want to speculate, because if you start speculating, oh, it was brought up, everybody's going to think there's big changes, and, not really, but, I mean, but there is potential for changes in the way things are done, and there's a potential to drop the cost of, uh, you know, the cost of operations in some areas of town by collaborative effort, so, that's what we're looking for.
Very good.
Excellent.
Excellent. We, uh, anything else, Dale, before correspondence?
No, that's it. We covered the rest of it.
Right.
All right, correspondence. Um, we're invited to the Plimpton Public Library Holiday Gathering, Thursday, December seventeenth, from two to four, volunteer recognition at two-thirty PM and special performances at three.
Okay.
All right, unfortunately, I will not be able to go. I, I can't do anything during the day. I have to, have to go to work. All right, from the, um, Department of Telecommunications and Cable, it's, um, the FCC recently adopted an order affecting the regulation of basic service tier cable rates in Massachusetts communities, specifically the FCC. Reverse the longstanding presumption that cable companies are not subject to effective competition, creating instead a rebuttable presumption that cable companies are subject to effective competition.
A rebuttable?
A rebuttable.
Presumption?
Yes.
Wow!
It is, I know. Um, when a cable company is deemed subject to effective competition in a community, basic service tier cable rates in that community are no longer subject to rate regulation. Okay, so that's, um, I don't think this actually gives us any type of rate. No, it doesn't. It's just, under the new FCC rule, franchising authority that wishes to retain its cable rate regulation authority must file a new certification disform with the attachment rebutting the presumption of effective competition by December eighth. What is today's date?[1153.14][1153.17](laugh) Fourteenth. Okay, all right, so...
It happened already?
It's gone.
I missed it.
I should've read that to begin with. All right, from FEMA, thank you for the opportunity to review the natural haz, natural hazard mitigation plan for the Old Colony Planning Region. Um, they have evaluated the plan for compliance. The plan satisfactorily meets all mandatory requirements set forth by the regulations. Okay, so that's great news. They accepted our plan, which was done by the Old Colony Planning Council. Okay, nice article in the Plimpton Halifax Express about, uh, things that we're working on. The employee, the formerly called Employee Handbook, which is now something else. And, um, regionalization, and, uh, we touched on that today. And then, um, other things that we had discussed, the municipal aggregation, which you're going to a meeting on that on Friday, I believe, aren't you?
With great anticipation.
Great anticipation, okay. And, uh, that was, that, um... All right, from the, um, Public Records Division, from William Francis Galvin. Looks like he said, um, that, uh, this was an appeal filed by Suzanne Saker. And his, um, conclusion is, whereas the town has offered to allow Ms. Saker to inspect their responsive records at no charge except for any applicable copying fees, I will consider this appeal closed. So he has closed his...
Very good.
All right.
Very, very good.
Film Office. My name is Eve and I'm from the Massachusetts Film Office, a state agency that markets Massachusetts as a filming location for television and movies. We're going through a database of contact information for towns all around the state, which we do annually, and I want to check in to see if our information for Plimpton is still the same.
I think...
So they've got Lisa Krantz, so we just need Bree. Okay.
So maybe Bree, you can write to them and just let them know you're the contact person now so that when the next major, uh...
Do the Plimpton reality show.
When they do, the Debra Sampson story.
Ooh!
So she wanted us to do it on the phone and that's it.
All right. Um, so I think we're up to minutes. I do wanna just remind the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, um, um, that, um, one of the two petitions we received earlier on, um, was the request for those meetings to be filmed as well. So maybe you wanna discuss that Wednesday night with your committee.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, uh...
It's not on the agenda because that's already been posted.
Well, although this is a timely thing that came up since then, couldn't be anticipated. And in my humble opinion, it could be discussed if desired and we'll, uh, attack it again next week.
It's a new agenda item, right.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, so I guess, um, dates to remember, um, we have a Board of Selectmen meeting, um, next Monday, December twenty-first. We're gonna take off December twenty-eighth and so our next meeting after that would be, uh, March fourth. Oh, no, January fourth.
Okay.
So I guess at least for now, we'll just have one week off for the holidays and, um, assuming nothing major came up, comes up. Public Safety Building Committee meetings, we know there's a meeting Wednesday, the sixteenth, and then again on the thirtieth. Um, we have two sets of minutes to, um, uh, to approve. Actually, we already did the executive session, so we have the minutes of, um, December seventh, which we got late this afternoon from Bree. Um, did everybody have a chance to take a look at it? A lot of you guys. Good for you. Um, I read mine online. Uh, who has the most changes here? Looks like you do. So maybe you'll be the keeper of the final copy?
Sure.
All right. Go to it.
Okay, so under, um, common bitler license renewal, I had, um, on, before we do the vote, I would say Mr. Russo recused himself and went into the audience to speak as a private citizen to answer questions from the board. And then Mrs. Joy confirmed that the restaurant is an accessory use to the farm and then we voted...
Very good.
The, um, okay.
Oh, well, actually, I shouldn't say very good. I need to recuse myself.
But that's an accurate depiction. Okay, what happened? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Colleen. Thanks, Colleen. Okay, um, then I had on the second page, these policies all already exist. We're not gonna be discussing these conflict of interest, sexual harassment.
You're right.
We did legal holidays last week.
So it, that was meant to be, to be added, so, um...
Yes, so they're not discussion.
Right, so it's just, maybe it's just policy and procedures to be added?
Yes, policy and procedures to be added.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, and then, let's see. All right, on the third page, I have, um, Mr. Russo made a motion to promote Officer Terry to police sergeant.
Yep.
Second, Ms. Thompson, made a motion, so put an A in there too. Um, under Old Colony Joint Transportation Invitation, I would just say, scratch the BOS, will not be in attendance. We don't have a, a rep for the, the Joint Transportation Committee, so, you know, we get those memos, but until we get a rep, unfortunately, we're not gonna have anybody that attends. Get rid of this last little period there, and that was it. Anything else, Colleen?
Two things. Uh, under the closing schedule, I would just actually add the day.
Oh, what day of the week it is?
Or, or, or the name of it, like New Year's Day.
New Year's Day. Oh, that's a great idea. Spell it out.
Yeah, just, if anybody looks at this, it's like, what?
Yeah.
You know, what's February fifteenth or something?
Okay.
I think that actually, that in, in the actual thing, it's actually done that way. It, it picks the holiday and, and it, and it tells what the holiday is.
Yes, I just, just for the, for the minute, so if somebody's reading the minutes, they'll, they'll have an idea of what that actually means and they're not really, really closing. And then also on the third page, under the correspondence, it says, Resident S can now upload a picture.
Oh, Resident, Residence, okay.
Yeah, so it's an extra space.
Okay, Residence, so I'll circle that.
So that was it, not much.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, make a motion these minutes of, uh, seventh, December seventh, be approved as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. Um, any last words from anyone?
Um, I would just like to address the, the petition that, um, you know, we certainly understand the importance of the public being, having access to the, the meetings and, you know, we certainly aren't, um, disregarding anyone's, um, interest because we realize how important it is. And so it is something that we were planning on discussing anyway, um, the first of the year, about, um, getting, uh, these meetings taped. So, you know, I appreciate the, all the signatures. I think it's, you know, wonderful that there's so many people that are actually interested in, um, what's happening at the town hall so that, uh, you know, we'll be looking at that and, um, and working to, uh, to increase communication and, um, and inform people, because the budget process is confusing and I think it would be helpful for people to have a better understanding of, um, of what goes into it and, um, and how the decisions are made. And, uh, I think that they're gonna be very impressed by, um, by the process and, um, and our finance committee. What a great job they do.
Since we're on the subject, I understand that a lot of people can't make the meetings. However, if you're not at the meetings, in particular the public building, safety building, we don't get your input. So you watching it at home is great and it's informative for you, but it's not all that helpful for me. So that's, I'd, I'd rather see people here. I want this done, but I want you here too.
Yeah, that's the ideal, is having, you know, the back and forth, um, dialogue because, right, this is just kind of a public service at this point where you don't have the opportunity to give us feedback in a timely manner, you know, when things are actually happening or ask your questions.
And, and although many of these people, I've seen your citizens, many of them are not.
Well, we'll have a week to wrestle with it and, uh, since we've each commented, I will comment that, um, I think we've each wrestled with this quite a bit and I've wrestled a lot on it. Um, I, this board, um, in the last year or so, has worked very hard at, um, transparency, at open government, um, and if I've done anything, I hope in my two and a half years on this board is to try to promote some level of civility, um, in discourse and a certain way of deliberating. And, um, we'll continue to work hard at that and, um... And I, and in a civil way, hopefully, continue to combat anything that isn't civil discourse, anything that isn't toward the public good, um, isn't any, uh, to combat anything that isn't, um, um, aimed at, um, helping the town get better. And we'll, we'll struggle with it. We'll have more conversation next week. It is the holiday season and we are appreciative for people that carve out time to watch this and, um, and give us our input.
Absolutely.
So we'll do it again next week. Um, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Um, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.